Okay, so we already opened our open session at six o'clock prior to executive session. So we are properly convened. So at this point, I'd like to invite anyone who would like to stand and do the pledge of allegiance with us. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment? Let's everyone save schools. Start schools later. Okay. No public comment?
Um, we're doing a presentation on private.
No, your presentation's not public comment. It's an agenda item.
Oh, okay.
It's an agenda item.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's an agenda item. And so now the superintendent's report. Patrick?
Yes. So first was supposed to be Officer Taylor, but I guess he's not able to be here today.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. I, I, he was not, he did not get back to me, so I believe he's here today. The, and then the second part was the start school leadership committee. I know that we had, we had several meetings with the former superintendent, Demus. It's strange me saying former. But, and I know you've done some fantastic work, and I want to say I look very much forward to meeting with you to continue the work. Superintendent Demus has certainly kept me in the loop on everything, and can't thank you enough for your fabulous study on this. I know there's a lot of research that went into it. So I'll turn it over to the safe schools, to the, I'm sorry, to the start schools later.
No, I started that, yeah.
That's all the essence. Start schools later committee to present where you are.
Okay. And should we stay here or move? Or?
You can, you can either, if you like to sit, you can sit if you're going to take turns presenting. Can you just stand right behind the, or stand right behind the wall?
Wherever you want, wherever you're comfortable.
Could you introduce everyone, Laura?
Well, not everyone is here. So I'm just, who's going to present is I'm going to present. My name is Laura Sherry. And Bruce Crystal, and he will be presenting also.
Okay. And the rest of your committee that's here? Couldn't you just introduce yourselves?
Yeah, they could introduce themselves.
I'm Dara Williams.
I'm Rose Maloney. I was on the committee.
Orange is on the committee.
And there were 15 members.
Yeah, those are the, yeah.
Right, I saw the list, okay.
You take them first.
And you're just here to observe?
Just here to observe.
And you're here to observe? Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. My name's Laura Sherry, and I've been advocating for starting school later for many years. I've met with past superintendent, and I've met with the Board of Health, the PSO, the town manager, and I've been before the school committee a few times. And, sorry. And prior to being a stay-at-home mom, I was a psychotherapist, and that informed a lot of my opinions on this issue. And so recently, the committee was formed to look into the efficacy of changing the start time for cohesive middle high school. We met since December, roughly once a month. And when we first got together, we established the parameters and the charge of our mission. One more slide. And so we were, well, how we wanted to look into it was the, we wanted to, the first time we met, we went over the, those established guidelines. We wanted to look into, get a better idea of the scientific and the medical data. We wanted to look into different schools and how they were, if they've made the change, adopted the change, how they adapted. And we wanted to get an idea of the students. So we did a survey for the students, and we did a survey for the adults, the parents. And we didn't look into the transportation, because there's a study that's pending this summer. And we had the guidelines that must be cost neutral, and then it also has to be put in place now and before it's implemented a year due to the teachers' contracts. And so we had, those were our guidelines. And those are the committee members, the 15 members. And in the beginning, we had varied views of strongly agreed, strongly disagreed with whether we were going to start school later. And a lot of people were just in the middle, and they just wanted to get more information to make their decisions. So we just wanted to, at the first meeting, we established that we wanted to figure out how could we objectively look at the issue of starting school later. So that was our, our mission, our charter.
So we began by looking at some of the, essentially, established rationales for doing this. And we listed these as a group. The general consensus is that adolescents need about nine hours of sleep. When in adolescence, circadian rhythms, the rhythms that keep you on a 24-hour day shift, so you basically move forward two hours in a day, that makes it very difficult to fall asleep early enough to get to sleep on time. The data in general is in support of later school start times. Information consolidation is better with more sleep, which is obviously important for students. Biology often has cascading risks, so if you make these children sleep deficient, then they're going to be more likely to have other problems, and that can cascade. And this would also potentially give the Boston students an advantage that they could get up a little bit later also. We also considered some of the potential caveats and concerns. We wanted to know how strong is this data biologically, scientifically, medically, societally? We want to know how reliable it is in the context of starting school later. We wanted to think about family and school logistics. What, we wanted solutions that would involve the entire school, the entire community. We wanted to think about after-school activities, and whether this was going to curtail activities or lead people to be pulled out of school. We wanted to think about childcare issues, because we wanted to make sure, we know that in some cases older children take care of younger siblings. We want the cost to be as close as possible to zero sum. We wanted to design a survey that was unbiased, so in other words, we didn't tell people what we wanted in the survey. We wanted to think about Boston Student City-sponsored events. We are cognizant of the fact that time itself is finite, so if the kids are going to be sleeping more, they're going to have to give something else out. And we thought about the concept of the adult societal norm, which is that work days start early. And we recognize we're not going to be able to think about all these, and again, this is from the first meeting, but this is sort of the things that we brought up. We also knew that certain things realistically we couldn't deal with. Even if the general conclusions are positive, we can't say that the solution is going to hit all targets. We're not going to solve all of teenage problems by moving school back. We know that changing the school start time is not going to affect all students equally. Some students may benefit, some students may not. And we're not considering the wider context of this, for example, nutrition, exercise, home environment. We discovered that adolescents do appear to need eight to 10 hours of sleep per night. The developmental changes in adolescents mean that most cannot meet this with a 7:30 a.m. school time. It's biologically impossible. About 87% of high schools in the United States fail to reach the recommended amount of sleep per night, and that is worse in cohesive. The general medical recommendations suggest later school start times. For example, the American Academy of Pediatrics believes 8:30 a.m. or later. This is just one of many organizations that has come out formally in favor of later start times. We note that surrounding towns are moving later, and there are statewide initiatives in discussion. If one looks at schools in eastern Massachusetts, you see a list of schools that all start after eight. I'll remind you that our middle high school currently starts at 7:30. One of the things I think is very telling in this list is that every school you see with a red arrow, which is the vast majority of them, is starting 2017 or later. There's a very recent movement to recognize just how important this is. About 77% of the top 50 schools in Massachusetts are looking into this. Of the 23 remaining percent, about a third are already late, about a third we just don't have data for, and about three schools are not looking into it at the moment. We know that the insufficient sleep affects the entire child, physical health, mental health, academic performance, risk and risk-taking behavior. This is a study that actually comes out of Doug Clareman's group in our, in our department. And what you're, whoops, and what you're looking at here is basically the odds that somebody has a problem, somebody undergoes a risky behavior, if they're getting adequate sleep. And that's greater than eight hours for adolescents. And what you see is that every time you reduce sleep by an hour to seven, by an hour to six, or less than six hours of sleep, you in some cases double the risk. And this is risky driving, tobacco use, alcohol use, marijuana use, other drug use, risky sexual activity, aggressive behaviors, mood and self-harm. Every one of these is worsened by not having enough sleep. And I'll point out that this is a study from 65,000 questionnaires that are done nationally. This is not a small study, and these are huge risks. If we look at some anecdotal reports from schools that have changed, NOSIT changed in 2012, moving 7:25 to 8:30. Within two months at the beginning of the following school year, 30% drop in tardiness, 53% drop in failing grades, 38% decline in Ds and Fs, 88% decrease in students suspended for disciplinary reasons. And then anecdotal comments such as, I think the tone of the day has changed. It's reflected in the overall mood of the student body. Students seem to be more alert. This is Hanover in 2016, moved to 7:55. We don't have this former start time. 22% decrease in students being tardy to school, 32% decrease in Ds and Fs in the period one class, 10% increase in As in term one. Many reported anecdotal benefits, and again, they did this because they thought it was in the best interest of the students at the school. Bedford, Maine, 2016, 7:35 to 8:35, 50% decrease in middle school tardiness, 40% decrease in middle school absenteeism, 26% decrease in high school absenteeism. Interestingly, they reported the nurses' visits dropped 25% overall and 50% in the morning simply by moving school start times one hour. 20% decrease in Fs during period one. Staff reported the students more alert. 75% now report being greater than eight hours of sleep. And again, I contrast that to 13% nationally, and then I'm going to show you in a second, 3% in cohesive. Students were opposed to the charge originally, the change originally, but now favorite. So now I want to talk about the survey that was actually done in the cohesive school. 100 seniors were surveyed in March and April. The survey data was looked at for internal consistency, calculated versus stated sleep duration. It was done in two series, which appear to be consistent. And I have additional results and details if people want them. I've tried to shorten it in the interest of time. Take-home lessons. There's a fourfold higher sleep aid use in the cohesive seniors than there is in the average U.S. adult population. 38% of the high school seniors require caffeine to stay awake in school. 92% of those surveyed require assistance to get up for school. 97% of those surveyed do not get medically adequate sleep. 70% of those surveyed require additional weekend sleep, and homework and activities do not appear to be related to the shorter sleep. So we started with a question, have you taken sleep aids, for example, melatonin? About 75% basically have not done it, or minimally do it, but pretty surprisingly, 15% use regularly, and that's about four times the U.S. adult average based on CDC and NIH. We asked about whether or not they require caffeine to stay awake in school. 38 of 100 answered yes. Basically, all one to two drinks per, per day. But I'll point out that because of the way the survey was done, a drink could be anywhere from 30mg, the comparison is a cup of tea, to 500 or more milligrams, which would be a venti Starbucks.
Or a Red Bull. Kids drinking the Red Bull.
And a lot of kids do not realize Red Bull has caffeine. So they may have very well answered no here, or not counted that in their drinks. There are only three seniors who report drinking more than two caffeinated drinks a day, and one said they do not use that to keep awake. We asked about how it would affect their AM and their PM routines. Basically, kind of what you would expect. The overall expectation is easier mornings and more complicated afternoons and evenings about equally. We asked how students get up for school. 92% of cohesive seniors require assistance to get up in the morning. That could be an alarm, that could be somebody waking them up, or both. In other words, these students are not able to wake up naturally. Cohasset seniors average 1.2 more hours of sleep on a weekend night than on a weekday night. You see that population shift with the blue bars over here and the orange bars over here. That suggests on average, it's about 30 minutes per night that they're short during the week. And I'll point out where the green arrow is. That's the medically, that's the minimal medically recommended amount of sleep. 97% of cohesive seniors did not reach that. When we now look at matching the weekday to the weekend sleep, about 70% of cohesive seniors sleep more on the weekend. The median individual sleep debt defined in this way would be 24 minutes a night. But if you ask about the seniors who specifically did not sleep or did sleep more, they are sleeping almost an hour a night more on the weekends. We also see social jet lag. You see the time that kids go to sleep shift more to what would be their biological norm on the weekend. They're drifting one to two hours later on the weekend. And again, this is when their body biologically wants to go to sleep. Before you fall asleep, there's about a two-hour window where your body basically cannot fall asleep. It's called a sleep-wake, the wake maintenance zone, where your circadian rhythm forces you to stay awake. And that's what enables the sharper biological rhythms. And when you're trying to get these kids to go to sleep on a weekend, on a weekday, they are trying to go to sleep in that forbidden period. That's the reason they need sleep aids. If you now look at activities versus homework versus sleep, and I apologize, this is a fairly complicated slide. If you start with sleep, less than six to more than eight hours, what you see is there's no association with the amount of activities that they do. If you flip it around and you ask people on their activities, less than an hour to greater than four hours, you see that there's absolutely no relationship with the amount of sleep that they get. So there's no relationship with their after-school activities and the amount of sleep. When you look at it versus homework, the kids that are sleeping less than seven hours are sleeping about, are doing, sorry, about half an hour more homework, okay, than the kids that are getting more than seven hours of sleep. But if you look at the amount of homework that they're doing, you see that there's no change whatsoever with four or less hours of homework a night. The only difference is in the five kids in the study who report doing more than four hours of homework a night. And I'll point out, because an equal number of activities does not in any way interfere with sleep, we have to at least consider the possibility that these students are getting, are taking longer to do their homework because they're sleep deprived, and therefore they're less efficient in doing their homework. We asked them subjectively what they saw as potential benefits. More sleep, getting to school on time, feeling better, being more engaged, being more attentive, better academics. Some also said better homework, better after-school activities, and some said better after-school job. In general, homework, after-school activities, and after-school job were considered potentially detrimentally affected by this, and about 20% said it might affect sibling care. If we look at the amount of benefits and concerns per person, you see that the amount of benefits is about equally spread out from one to eight, whereas the detriments is about equally spread out between zero and four. So overall, people are counting more potential benefits. We now switch, we'll talk about the parent survey. Overall, about two-thirds feel the change would be neutral to very easy. We see that both in the class of middle high school and in the parents from Osgood and Deer Hill. About 20%, only, in other words, only about one-fifth expect that there would be some financial consequence of moving schools later. When we asked the parents what we should think is important before we make this change, both school systems answered the same way, academics, physical and mental health. About two-thirds of the high school students and about half of the Osgood and Deer Hills parents felt their child's sleep would improve with this. Overall, about 60% are in favor of this, and about 25% against. And I point out, and I think this is really critical, the parents who were given this survey did not see anything I just showed you. They did not know, for example, that 97% of our seniors are not getting enough sleep, or that 90% need help getting up in the morning. Okay, so they're in favor without knowing any of this evidence. In summary, biological factors drive later sleep time in adolescence. Medical recommendations are for later start times. Multiple factors suggest moving school later would benefit studies and students at class middle high school. Again, 90% needing help getting up, 97% not getting enough sleep, 70% requiring additional sleep on the weekends. Homework and activities are not the cause. Okay, that's a critical issue. We're not, these kids are not staying up later because they've got sports, or they've got band, or anything like that. They're staying up later for other reasons, and it's also not homework-related. There were no objective factors in the student survey that rejected later start times, and the parental survey also favored the change. Some of the caveats that were read, that were raised, the transportation study as noted, has not yet been completed, so we don't know the logistics of what is possible. There is a question from one person on the committee whether or not cohesive students would take advantage of the added time to get adequate sleep. There's a question from another one about getting more intraschool, in other words, year-over-year data for schools that make the change and what happens. I did show you three anecdotal pieces of that. Unfortunately, it's not something that most school systems are collecting data on. And this is the final, where I'll call vote, it's 13 to two. Thank you. And I'll take any questions.
Thank, thank you very much. That was, that was great. So if the committee, because I think there could, there's a lot here and to absorb. And if we have questions, I want us all to ask questions, but I'd like us to kind of be orderly about it and not repeat questions. So Craig, if you, if, do you want to start? Or, because I took, I have, I have a lot, so I want to let my committee members ask questions.
Well, if you have a lot, Alan, why don't you go, why don't you go first, and then, you know, so we're not, you're just getting at first?
Okay. Okay, so the, and, and again, some questions might be for Patrick, and some you might not have the answers for. So you had commented that at the beginning and at the end about the traffic study, which is going to take place in September. How, how would that impact the time? Like, have you looked at timing?
Well, that would be a decision for the school committee and the superintendent. We were just making a recommendation, that was what our charge was, to make a recommendation based on the data.
Okay, okay.
So that's, that's then the ball's in your court to figure out if you think it needs to be done for the students' health and well-being.
Okay.
And that would be you.
Did you talk with the athletic director about how it may or may not impact athletics?
Louise spoke to the athletic, and everybody, and they said they were, is that how you understand it, Patrick? Did she relay that to you? She told us that he said it would not be a problem.
No, no concern.
Yeah, the, the minimal, she did, yeah, no, there wouldn't be concerns with schools.
Because a lot of schools are starting later anyway, so a lot of.
Yeah, I noted some in our league are starting, some of the Cape schools, like Montemoy. They, there is a start later school, and that's probably one of the furthest districts we travel to athletically.
And I think one of the slides did mention it was a, one, just one concern was that when they mentioned the concerns, was whether students being pulled out of class to leave early. But that's a concern presently.
Presently, correct.
So I, I'll add two things to that. One school that actually looked at that found only about 25 additional stu, 25 additional students removed from class in the year following moving later. And there is at least one league that I think has an entire block of schools, is looking at moving the entire block later. But I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I read that in some other, some other information, yeah. On your committee of 15, did you have a presentation from all three schools?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay.
We did, yes. Louise made sure that, and Louise represented the school.
The school's right, obviously, okay. Excellent. Regarding the, the Boston students, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that they come, they all come together, whether they're a kindergartner or a senior, they, they take the same bus?
I, I think actually Louise had mentioned it might be even more advantageous, because we could share a bus with Hangon.
Will we already share a bus with Hangon, I think?
Oh, I, I don't know. She said there was some, something would be even more beneficial. So that was actually, that would be in the plus category with maybe sharing.
Right? There's 47 elementary students in the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I.
And that, the transportation's nothing that we focused on. That's just something that Louise told us.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, so I'm just, you know, responding to the presentation. So I think that, that's a good follow-up. I, I, I think that they all come in the morning on the same, so, on the same bus, so. But it's something for us to follow up on and get clarified.
I think the next step is for me, obviously, to give it to the committee, and to make sure all those logistical questions that clearly are, are out there, that I understand, you know, all the, all the, I mean, this is great data. It's absolutely fantastic data and wonderful research. So I think, right now, I think the, the point is to make the, make that argument, and then really look at the logistics of it after that.
Can I just say something about the bus situation? Basically, it would be a moot point, because the elementary schools would start a little bit earlier, or Deer Hill would start earlier. So the kids would still come on the same bus at the same time. Who would be going to school first versus waiting would be different among that group.
Right, right, so.
Yeah.
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 Right, so right now, our elementary students wait because they start later. And in a different model, it would be the older students who would wait, so.
So maybe they could.
Unless we have a different option, so that, that's all. So that's just, to Patrick's point of point, we're going to have to clarify how that's going to work for them. Bruce, I think you answered it, but I, I was curious, you know, about the, the initial results after implementation, and the districts that you cited are great. I'm wondering about the rate of sustenance of those performances, but you said that they didn't tend to track them.
One of the problems is there's very little hard data.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a couple of reasons. One of the, one of the simplest is the districts that are doing it are just doing it. And they're not, they don't really care about providing data for somebody else. The second is it's, as you see, fairly involved to collect that kind of data.
Right.
And one of the reasons that I point out that it's anecdotal is they're reporting what they want to report. Now, whether there's negative data, if there is, we're not seeing it. And in most cases, we're not seeing the raw data, we're seeing what somebody else has further extracted. The other, let me, let me go two things, and then I'll come back, sorry. A lot of districts point out the things that they notice the most. The problem with that is a lot of them statistically are hard to, hard to deal with. Like, one reports four less car accidents, okay? But if you have one car accident in the district, it just is almost a fruit of a point. You do see consistently, most of them have less tardies, most of them have less absences. One of the issues with grades is that a school system that scales its grades, that puts everything on a curve, you will never see a difference because the entire curve raises. So there's a lot of factors like that, and nobody is really doing the study of following rigorously year after year with a predetermined outcome. So the anecdotal data is basically what you have.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Paul.
Well, I was just going to reiterate the fact of the Boston students. I had the pleasure of watching the fifth grade graduate from Deer Hill's past graduation, and it was two students from Boston, and one of the things that broke my heart, the fact that they had to get up at five in the morning to go to school. And, and I just think that's just ridiculous, that we're asking these children to get up at five in the morning. You know, some people are like, hey, well, they're lucky to go to school here. That's not, that's not, they're sleeping on the bus. I mean, it's, it's, it's just ridiculous. I mean, we've had the Board of Health recommend that we do this, and I think we should just get to a vote and get this thing done. I mean, I don't need to hear any more statistics. I've seen it, I've heard it live from a child telling me how hard it is to get up at five in the morning.
Okay.
And I think if we're going to get progressive, I just think this is just, to your point, we can talk about data all we want. Everybody else is doing it. Every school system around here is doing it. Any, any one of us should do it. So it's in our contract. I don't know how much we need to talk about this and talk about this. Tomorrow, God bless you, let's just take a vote.
Okay. Paul, Paul, can, can we finish with the questions? And I'd like everyone to have an opportunity, because we are learning. We haven't all been privy to, to the meetings, and, and our role, because this will require a school committee vote, our role is to, you know, figure out with, with the superintendent, okay, how do we make this happen in the best possible way? So I'd like to just finish with the questions, and have everybody have an opportunity to weigh in.
I have questions as well.
Yep, Jen has some questions. So I'll try to.
No, you don't, don't rush. This is a topic I think it is good for us to hash out.
Yeah.
I hope that people will engage in this, and I think that sometimes as a committee, I, I have felt rushed in making decisions. This is a big decision, and there's a lot involved in it. So I do think we should take the time to do our due diligence.
Thank you, Jen. So, so you had mentioned in, in the, the student response that they said that homework and activities didn't appear to cause the, the lack of sleep. Did, did you have any, like, open answers on, like, well, I'm doing this, or I'm doing that, or I chores?
So, so two pieces on that. There were no open answers of that type that were in the survey. What we did, though, was not ask them about whether activities or homework affected it. What we did is we collected all of the individual data, and then I did all the calculations mathematically.
Okay.
Can we just go over that slide again? Because I, I didn't fully understand.
The key take-home lessons?
The excellent sleep versus activity.
It's a very dense slide. Let me walk you through it again.
I just didn't want to interrupt your case.
That's fine. Let me walk you through it. But this is a very dense slide, and this is broken up into like six slides, and there's grayed-out slides at the end, but it's easy, it's much easier here. If you simply focus on how much sleep somebody gets, they're getting less than six to eight to nine hours, what you see is there's no difference, there's no trend, that as people have more activ, I'm sorry, as people have more sleep, they have less activity.
Okay.
Okay? So if somebody were having to sacrifice activities. So if somebody were having to sacrifice activities to get sleep, you would see this going down as you go down there. Then you flip the question around and you ask it the other way around. If you now focus on activities, as somebody increases their amount of activity, if activities are driving loss of sleep, you would expect this number to go down. And what you see is it doesn't move at all. Okay? So those two together tell you that there's no relationship at all between the amount of sleep the students are getting and the activities they're doing.
So this, this battle against time sort of thing you're talking about?
Right, it turns out not to be relevant at all with sleep and activities.
Okay, I, alright, I get it now.
Okay, you want me to take you through homework, the same basic?
No, I get it now.
Well, for the, for the homework, is, you pointed out that it might take longer because of less sleep. Is that what your data shows?
We, we know that, so, let's focus here. If you look at the amount of homework people do versus the amount of sleep they get, there's no loss in sleep with anything less than four hours. So in other words, people are doing three to four hours of homework, are getting the same amount of sleep as somebody who's doing less than an hour. There are five people in the survey that report doing more than four hours of homework a night. Those four people sleep almost an hour less, about, about forty-five minutes less. Okay, we know that if you're getting six hours of sleep and you're supposed to be getting eight, these people are very sleep deprived. They're the worst people we have in the survey. It's very likely, we know that if, if you have somebody who's sleep deprived, they lose attention. So the classic test for that is you have people press a button every time something comes on. And you see how fast they can press it and what their average response time is and how much they miss it. In other words, the signal flashes on and they're just sitting there. And that goes up as you become sleep deprived, either acutely, you stay up all night, or chronically, you don't get enough sleep day and after, day after day. That's going to make it harder to do homework. Given the fact that this line is absolutely fine, in other words, four hours of activity at night is not a problem. It's not realistic to say that homework specifically is keeping these kids up because of the hours spent. Okay, so the argument becomes, we have to at least consider the fact that of the fact these five kids don't sleep well, it may be because, it may be because they're, it may not be, the homework is causing them to sleep less. It may be the lack of sleep is increasing the time it takes to do the homework.
And if you don't get enough sleep, you don't get information consolidation. You just, you can't connect what you learned before to what you're learning now because you.
And you're saying they can't fall asleep earlier, so they should be able to make it up on the other end.
What your circadian drive does at some level is it helps you fight off the fact you're becoming progressively, progressively sleep deprived as you go across the day. So if you think about somebody who's awake for sixteen hours and sleeps for eight, you gradually increase sleep pressure as the day goes on, so your body wants to go to sleep. So the problem is, if that were the way, your, if that were the sole system you would have, you would gradually be more and more likely to fall asleep every minute and you would basically be dysfunctional at night in the early evening. So what your body has evolved to do essentially is you have a circadian drive. And that circadian drive peaks, the circadian drive essentially to be awake, peaks just before you fall asleep. And then as it goes over the edge, the sleep drive then puts you to sleep. In an adolescent, that circadian drive is moved about two hours later. So instead of falling off the cliff at eight or ten, let's say ten for the sake of argument, now you're falling off the cliff at twelve. If you have to now be up at seven, you cannot possibly get more than seven hours of sleep. And that last two hours, it's almost impossible biologically to get to sleep.
Dr. Chris, we also, we're, we have a big push here for the wellness of the child here in Cohasset. When you talk about physical health, that's also a major component of this as well.
Correct.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the physical and the mental health part?
So let me go back to the slide from, from Beth and let me start there. So when you're talking about mental health, you are talking about things like mood and stuff, are. You're talking about things like aggressive behaviors. You, when, when you're talking about physical issues, you're talking about risky driving. But you're also talking about tobacco use, alcohol use, marijuana use, general drug use, risky sexual activity. These all have physical risks associated with them. Okay, and you're doubling the risks of all of those.
But this is the only question I have, so we didn't have this. How, how do we, I mean, we're just saying there's a correlation. We're not saying lack of sleep causes risky behavior. We're just saying that.
You, so the.
May, maybe the behavior causes the lack of sleep, or maybe the lack of sleep causes the behavior. We don't know which.
Right, correct.
Okay.
You obviously can't.
Right.
Test that directly.
Right, right, right.
What you can do, which is done in the lab, is you will keep, you can keep people up when you can chronically sleep deprived. And then you can see how well they make decisions that are, let's say, associated with risky behavior. And that does go up and it goes up dramatically when people are sleep deprived.
Exactly, so then there is a correlation there, there's definitely.
But in that case, it's a cause. Because in that case, you're sleep depriving somebody in a lab. And when you do that, they then have those deficits. In terms of the other physical activity, it becomes, the physical aspect becomes much more important as you age, loss of sleep, sleeping at the wrong circadian phase are associated with elevated risks of obesity and elevated risks of diabetes. If you bring somebody in the lab and you keep them up, or you put them on the wrong sleep schedule, you put them on a shortened sleep schedule, they will become insulin resistant in a relatively short period of time. So again, that's a proven cause. And risks of breast cancer are higher in women who do shift work. Risks of diabetes are higher in people who do shift work. And a lot of that does tie to sleep.
Am I allowed to do this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on the committee, I'm also a neuropsychologist.
Can you give us your.
Yeah, Florenchism.
Okay.
So I just want to talk too about cognitive effects also, because I give tests to people who in fact are in sleep and everything like that. And so not only does it affect sustained attention, it affects learning and memory, as you said, it also, this really nodes to like impulsivity and self-monitoring. So that does bear on these physical risks, like risky driving, tobacco use, marijuana use. People are less capable of monitoring their behaviors, overriding impulses that may be negative or damaging. At a time when that part of the brain is, kids have more responsibilities, but their frontal lobes that involve judgment and reasoning and problem solving are underdeveloped. So that just exacerbates that risk for the risky behaviors and the cognitive problems.
Some of my comments were like ninety-two percent need something to get them up in the morning, well, so do I, you know. You know, a lot of people need an alarm clock, I thought that was interesting.
Do they, do we have information about other districts saying that their kids are like not needing an alarm clock?
Yeah, who doesn't need an alarm clock in high school?
Well, well, if you get up later, you, you probably don't. I mean, it's a natural, this, he's saying that there's a natural way. If you have eight to nine hours sleep, it's a natural way to get up.
If you're getting up in the correct, correct cycle, you do not need an alarm clock. The reason for that is it's essentially impossible to store sleep. So for example, if I bring you, again, bring you in a lab, let you sleep as much sleep as you need, okay? Let's say over a week or two weeks, whatever it is, you are now on your own cycle naturally. You will sleep a certain period and you will wake up. You cannot go back to sleep and fall asleep more and get more sleep than you need, your body doesn't do it.
Okay, but, but I think we would all agree that every child is different, so they're not all going to have that same. So we'll still have, have students that need something to help them get up in the morning, right?
What you're doing, think about it this way, like a lot of. That's.
No, no, there's going to be a bell curve.
It's, it's exactly, it's a bell curve.
There's going to be a bell curve, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So what you're trying to do, if you move about an hour, if you go back to. If you go back to this slide, what you're really hoping to do is to move everybody one bar. So this is the weekday sleep. If you move everybody an hour, let's say you move the times back an hour, you're now getting to the point where more than half of your students are getting a required amount of sleep instead of three percent. Okay, if you look at one of the anecdotal reports, seventy-five percent of that district now reports getting more than eight hours of sleep. They presumably should be able to wake up without an alarm clock. Okay, that's what you're really hoping. You're, you're going to make these people better because they're here.
Right, right, right.
These three people are not going to benefit.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I, I get it, right, right. So then on the, the parent survey, how many, how many parents responded?
One hundred that accounted.
A hundred that were counted, okay.
So we can get a hundred without paying for the, the survey to be collected, basically. And that's what we used was a hundred.
So did you take the first hundred that responded or?
I believe that was.
I think it was cut up down.
I think it, it's a hundred from each school, right?
Oh, a hundred from each school, so, oh, so, so middle, high school counted as one building, right? For the purposes of the survey. So, so you had three hundred.
Three hundred?
Hundred, uh, no, Deer, Deer Hill and Oxford were four, I think.
Okay, so a hundred, oh, okay, so it was about split, um, okay.
What I would point out, though, is that the two schools were very, very consistent. Essentially, you got one study at, with two hundred.
Okay, all right. And then I just had a, a question, then for the Oxford Deer Hill, um, parent survey result. The question of would students get more sleep with later starts? But is that a, a good question for an elementary parent? Because the later start is actually going to be the flip for them than the earlier start, which.
Well, that is up to you. There, I mean, that's if that's how you decide to go. It might be when you get the transportation study, there might be a possibility to have Oxford and Deer Hill start at the same time. So how, that's however.
Right.
You're going to go with it. But, and they naturally wake up earlier anyway.
Okay.
I think we asked, the question for the Oxford Deer Hill parents was, do you think your child's sleep would be adversely impacted by this change? Because we knew that those kids, I mean, they'd wake up.
Yeah, it was customized for each batch.
Okay.
Just say, I think this data is very compelling. And I, I think the, the data that I've, I've researched on sleep and the need for sleep is very compelling. I see this as a bigger part of a wellness initiative. Did, was any thought given to or looked at reasons why kids may be staying up, i.e. electronic devices? Or other things that really, you know, unless we handle that as well, starting school later might not have as significant a, a fact. I mean, I'm not, I'm all for it, I think it's great. But I think just in a big, in terms of a, a whole wellness approach to our students, so look at what those, those compounding factors are, I think would be important.
That's nothing that we, that.
No, might not.
Let me, let me give you three answers to that. One is that we did not look at them all. Yes, it's related to the point that I raised at the very beginning, that we stayed away from nutrition and exercise in home environment. It's okay, yeah. The second one is that you do see in other schools that when you start school later, the times shift. Okay, in other words, the, the, you're now getting seventy-five percent of the, of the school getting a required amount of sleep. And the third is to, to look at a question like that, you have to think about what would be doing very different. So not only did you try to, you also would have to go back very differently. You have to generate a lot of, of information with why people, you know, do you do this, do you do this? And then look at all the, the.
Right.
It's a much larger.
Yeah, so it was beyond the scope of what you could do. But I guess I just, I just put that out there as a thought, that it's, I think it's a much bigger picture. And I'm sure no one disagrees with that.
I think we were cognizant about not, Louise was very worried about us overburdening parents and students in surveys. And there was that huge risk for health survey that had a lot of questions about drinking, marijuana, electronics.
Fair enough, yeah.
So we thought we could, if anything, you know, look at that data.
That's great, and I didn't mean to show them, I just.
Yeah, yeah, no.
It's interesting. We've had substantial conversations on it at different points. Because to your point, nobody disagrees that those are amplifying factors, you're blaming that on your phone and just blue light, you know.
That's just one of them, I think.
And one of, one of, probably many, yeah. But, yeah, in terms of, you know, pulling the levers we're able to pull as a school system.
Yeah.
All right. Does, does anyone on the half committee?
I do have a couple of questions. So this is, this is very compelling. But I see this as like a, a sort of a two-part thing. There's the data and the evidence, and then there's trying to figure out how to do it. So that's the logistical piece. And so I have a question about, because I went, um, last fall, I went to the Monomoy presentation on starting school later. And they did a couple of things that I think made it successful. The first thing, is, it's Monomoy, right?
Monomoy.
Monomoy, sorry, excuse me, I, anyways, I listened to the superintendent speak. And there were two things that they did that I think helped in its, what he was stating was a success. They reconfigured the sports league, so they were looking at what teams they played. And actually, they, they mentioned Cohasset, they were like, we're driving all the way to Cohasset, do we still play them?
Yeah.
They do, yeah.
But he, they, that was a conversation that had, that the superintendent at that, in that district felt had to take place to figure out, you know, how long is the distance time? Because I have a concern that kids are leaving class early now. And if we change the start time, that means instead of leaving class twenty minutes early, it's going to be earlier because we, we have the later start time.
For those longer trips.
And, right, and that gets into like over an hour of time on learning, which I would like some breakdown of, you know, how much time on learning is going to be affected by this. I know that that district looked closely at that. The other thing that they did is, um, they said, my, my, another concern I have is for working parents who, they get up, they go to work. You say ninety-two percent of students need help getting up. They leave their sleeping child in bed and then they go to work and, and how does that affect those kids? And what support, and I know in Monomoy what they did, and, and this is, I, I am working from memory from over a year ago, but they, they opened the doors earlier and so that some kids could go to school earlier. And there was sort of, like, they did like homework in the morning or some kind of flex time so that parents of, that work could drop their kids, tho- those who are going to work earlier could drop their kids and know, hey, they got to school. Because we're going, if, if we move the time up, we might have younger children having to lock up the house themselves. And there are issues around that.
So we actually were concerned about that. So that's buried in this data. If you look at Oxford and Deer Hill, we asked about the effects on the family and child's morning routines. Very easy, about twenty-eight percent, easy about twenty-five percent, neutral about thirty percent. So basically, three-quarters say no negative effects whatsoever on the morning routine. And then the remaining, about fifteen percent who answered it, said that they expected it to get more difficult. And that's Oxford and Deer, Deer Hill. When you look at Cohasset Middle High School, again, it's about seventy percent. And you look at the AM forty, fifty-five, it's about seventy percent, about the morning routines would be moving better. So most of the people that responded did not have that particular concern. That's the reason we asked this question, why we did.
I would say that, you know, you can go right down to the Ben Franklin close. This isn't perfect for everybody, but when you weigh out the pros and the cons, the pros way outweigh the cons. That said, this is something that I respect, that needs to be worked out. But we are up against a timetable here. We've spent a lot of time, effort, speeches. Ellen, you and I went to a, a presentation more than a year ago. We've had our Board of Health vote on this. Every other school district's doing it. I think that it, we should take a vote tonight. Based on, based on what we have, because there is time limits on our teacher's contract. It's a year away. That gives Mr. Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan, that gives you a whole year to get this thing going. But in the interest of the Boston kids that are waking up at five in the morning, our own public health company, all these people making these. Can I finish, please? I would just say that in my opinion, there's enough talk, we need to take some action here today. And I would like to see this happen, gives us a whole year to take all these concerns. I just don't know how much the Board of Health of Cohasset unanimously voted for it. The Board of Health of Cohasset told us to do this. I don't, who are we not going to listen to? We have a doctor here telling us that our kids are at risk. We gotta, we gotta take some action, that's all I'm saying.
Jen, one more comment.
Oh, I haven't, I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
I do, I have a couple of questions. We have the.
Um, we have the I pass, uh, or we did, where I know we're moving to Aspen. That's a database that we can tap into to think about this time on learning issue. I don't, I I haven't gotten what I consider a satisfactory answer to how much time on learning could be potentially lost.
With sports teams.
With sports teams. I, I think that that is very important, I think that this is very important, it's all very important. And so I think that if we're going to make data-driven decisions, we need to get the data. And as far as the Metco kids, my my understanding is that we share buses with other communities, and what we do doesn't, it's not, doesn't necessarily change that schedule for for Metco students. Now, again, I think we need to check with, uh, Metco and Alicia and so.
I thought something, she did say something was a little different, and it would be advantageous for us.
I don't know what it is.
Yeah, okay.
Because personally, I would hate to jeopardize losing Metco students.
No, I think, I think we're the reason why they leave earlier, so they would all leave later.
Louise absolutely said it would be beneficial for Metco because they share us with Hingham, and they, Hingham already starts.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not doubting you, but unfortunately Louise is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, I do too.
Okay, so, so let, so in order to wrap this up, um, I appreciate this very, very much, I think it's phenomenal.
I mean, really.
Phenomenal work, and for the fifteen of you who met religiously, being on a committee, I know how challenging that is, um, to get together. It is data that's that's significant, I I I don't want to presume to speak for everybody. It it makes common sense, you know, with with what we know today compared to what we knew five years ago, with what we knew fifteen years ago, it makes common sense. Uh, I am not in a position where I want to put a motion on the floor to accept this because our, we have some fiduciary responsibilities, so I would like us to have a little time with the central office to look at what the bus routes look like, to look at exactly how old Metco work, to look at some of the, um, things that Jennifer has brought up in terms of time on learning loss with athletes, and 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 maybe, I looked at the schools, there are two that are in the South Shore League in which we compete, Rockland and Monomoy, um, and you mentioned another district, um, that had talked about the whole, sports league was working on it, there were, there's four, Hingham, Hanover, Cituette, and Duxbury are all in the same league. So we can, we can move towards that.
Okay, and I just have one question, because of the teacher's contract, you have to decide and put it out there prior to, so can you rescind it if it doesn't work out, but put it, you know what I'm saying?
We, well, we have.
So vote on it, go, I I don't mean tonight, don't misunderstand me, but I'm saying, can you, um, contingent upon it working out, so that it is, so we don't have, you decide in October, yes, and then it's not the year after, it's the year after.
I, it it would not be my intent or desire to have a vote not happen prior to the opening of school. And we have, we have three more meetings.
Can you say that?
That's all I wanted to, yeah, that's all.
I said, it's not, it it would not be my intent to not put this to a vote to the committee, to change the times after school begins, which is the trigger point for.
It's starting options.
The contract, and we have three meetings between now and the beginning of school.
That's wonderful.
So that means that you want to put it.
No, 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 it, I would like it to vote a vote before September first.
Thank you.
So, so.
I'll be good with that.
So, um, that that would be the intent, I also think in fairness to Ashley and Craig, who are new to the committee, and this was an awful lot of of stuff, I went through it twice, and I made my notes, and I didn't share half of them with you, but I I think they haven't been privy to some of the other information, and I think it would be good for them, and I I, I'm sorry to speak for you, but to really have a little bit of time to absorb this, to maybe look at some of the research, come up with, you know, some of their own questions, um, being, being open to this, and then allow us to practically look at bus routes and and look at, okay. We have a new middle school, do, maybe we have four routes a day, maybe we don't have three.
When is that study going to be done?
Well, this, well, the, the traffic study was approved, I mean, it's gonna be done in the fall when school is open, so I I'm a little, I I would like to sketch, I would like to see us get to a point where we can sketch out viable, practical bus routes and start and stop times, and then have the flexibility to incorporate the traffic study and make adjustments as needed. I don't want to wait for the traffic study to say, this is what it's gonna look like, I'd rather say, this is what it's gonna look like, if we have to tweak it, we have to tweak it.
Okay.
And it could be scenario A, scenario B, scenario C.
I think, yeah, we, we actually, I think Louise did a study like that prior to even the committee meeting form.
Yeah, she had a superintendent's coffee in this room, and I think, I think I have that information, so.
But I think that's probably.
Yeah, and and then, then we have to dollar it out, because we have seven buses. You know, so we have to, we have to, we have to figure, figure that out, that that's kind of, you know, central office and fiduciary, our fiduciary responsibility. So I I hope, I hope that thought process is satisfactory.
So I think we, that there's some logistics that need to be looked at.
Yeah. May I just ask one question, Dr. Chris, or Dr. Chisholm, what, so is there, are there, um, not as many, or not any concerns about pre-adolescent children not getting as much sleep because they traditionally go to bed earlier, or?
The, the way to think about it is that.
They're not going through the same developmental changes?
The developmental changes have, haven't happened to them yet, and that's why they're on an earlier cycle.
Okay.
So in essence, by moving them earlier, you're going more to their natural state.
Okay, okay, thank you, you probably said that, and I hadn't made you repeat it, I'm sorry.
I don't think I did.
But I think when we saw the bus data, what it looked like the most reasonable option, the cost, neutral option would be moving Deer Hill the time that currently the middle school and high school starts leaving Osgood the same, but again, more, that needs to be nailed down, but it just looked like the Deer Hill kids would move a little bit earlier.
Right, okay, Jen, one.
Sorry, I won't, I, I would, could you look at the idea of sort of a softer start to school?
What do you mean by that?
I, to to ease, uh, the strain of this for working parents, I'm, I'm concerned about kids that are gonna be left to close up houses. In in the other district, what they did is sort of the homework, or we could shift the intramurals, we used to have that intramural slot, slot in the middle school, maybe shift it to the morning, so that kids could maybe enter the school a little early, and parents might have a little peace of mind in knowing that they're at school.
Yeah, I I will say though, and I I appreciate the the committees wanting to get a vote on this, but a lot of this does require some research from I am, you know, I've been a superintendent for a week now. So I do, I do want to make sure I do.
Plenty of experience.
I do want to make sure I do, I do this thoroughly.
Yeah.
Working with the committee, I look forward to it, I think it's well worth it and very important. I just, I don't want to rush, um, and I appreciate that it could be frustrating to a committee who's been talking about this for some time, but still, I want to make sure I give you the proper data, I talk to the proper people. I do want to make sure we get as much input as we need to from the community, even though I know the survey was important. You know, having people have a voice and be able to talk about it is very important to me as well. So I just want to be mindful of that, um, that we don't rush to vote something in that we really can't put into place. Also, I'm just gonna put that out there.
And that's why I said it would be my intent, I did, I, that's not a commitment.
And I want to be very.
It would be my intent to have a vote.
And anybody listening.
It would be my intent to have a vote by September first, if all of our questions and all the logisticals worked out to the benefit of the district.
And I guess the question, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mar.
Yeah, the question that I had, uh, wondered, is if you don't feel like you have all the T's crossed and the I's dotted, if you would, um, have it be voted on so that it wouldn't, because you might be able to get it all done in November and say, oh, well, they we, but now we know how to do it, we'll have to wait, not till the next year, but the year after. If you don't work it out, could you rescind it, and, so I'm not, that's something.
I do need to bring the association to the table, we have to impact bargain anything that happens that interferes with their schedule, or that interferes with our work, that changes it, so it is a, um, that, that's just a, that's, that's an obligation of ours as well.
Or even just, maybe not, even if, I'm, I'm hoping you obviously vote for this before September, but if you didn't have all the information that you want, um, can you just make sure that you don't need to have the, that in the contract for the following year?
Yeah, I, I think to Patrick's point, we, he has to, we have to talk to the association.
And we want to.
And we want to anyways, we would say, here's where we are, here's what the contract states. We, we may vote prior to, but it doesn't mean it's a done deal, is what you're saying. Because if by November we can't figure it out, if it can't be figured out, then we'll just go back to what the original contract says. That, that's what you're saying.
Can you vote in, in, like, practice, like, or in?
Yeah, I just didn't want, obviously, what I'm thinking is.
Provisions, and the other thing is, is what she's saying also too, is if we don't get it done this September, then we gotta wait another year. So all those students would be subject to all those disasters that we're talking about.
And that's great that you guys appear to do.
To your point, Mar, the way.
We have to talk to the, we have to talk to the association.
Right, but we also, we have it in the contract that we can start the start times that we want, so we would have a whole year to rectify the situation. That's all I'm saying, right, we'd have a whole year.
We just, Paul, what, I think what Mar is saying is, we, and what Patrick is saying, if we, if, if, if we go by the contract and we announce to the, the association that we're starting, we're changing the start and stop times by building for the following school year prior to September first, if we can't figure it out, will they be okay with no change at all? After announcing a change, that's what you're saying.
Yes, just so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we can't get it done, we can say, well, we'll get it done next year, or, so that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I certainly.
Cause you want to roll it out, right?
I think it fits in with what we were about, we're just trying to help kids.
Help, help softly, yeah.
But it's, it's just a matter of making sure that we do it thoroughly, that we get all the input from the community, and that we do, we do consult, you know, the staff who will be impacted as well, and make sure that we, uh, have everything in place.
Okay. Everybody good?
I'm on.
Okay, excellent, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you, it was awesome.
Nobody wants to stay.
I don't know, nobody ever wants to stay.
No, he's got.
And I just want to say, how lucky are we to have Bruce, I mean.
Thank you, thank you. I'll be in touch with you folks. Okay, I'll be in touch, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So next up, we have a hiring update.
Yes.
Um, so if you look at in your packet, please, there's a, um, agenda E two, if you turn to the second page, there were some, last, well, it was one, last second change, so I, this is the, the hiring update that you should be looking at. I believe that you've been updating on everything except for what's in bold, am I correct? But I'll go back if you'd like me to.
I think we have.
You have, okay, good. So as you notice, we have, uh, and the first one in yellow there is an ESP at Deer Hill that, um, we were hiring. This is the change, we had someone hired, and unfortunately, um, the person decided not to accept it, and then rescinded the acceptance, so that's why you, you'll see on the front page, there's someone, I'm looking at Deer Hill, um, where it says ESP one to one.
Yeah.
Uh, which is still a position we need to fill, if you look on the front, you'll see that it actually was, uh, was hired. So that's a, that's a change, so that we had that hired, and now we don't, and we have, we reposted it.
Okay.
So, yeah. Second, the second page, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, so the second page is where we are today?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That was the only, that was the only reason we have a second page.
Oh, okay.
So going down, middle school, we have hired a, a new assistant principal, Catherine Salas. Catherine is, was formerly, um, a assistant principal for the last several years at Mattachies, uh, middle school in Dennis Sharmith. She comes with an extensive, um, counseling background, and she has a doctorate from Northeastern. She's a fabulous addition, we're over the moon to have her, and already, Dr. Salas and, um, soon to be Dr. Mills are working really well collaboratively together, and doing some fabulous planning in the middle school. I know that a message was sent to the community about, um, Dr. Salas and her, her appointment, and of course, to the staff too. Dr. Mills, well, not Dr. Mills, yeah, Mr. Mills. And then, um, at the high school, we, um, hired Tara Noase, who I believe, uh, I don't, was she, she wasn't on this before, so. Tara was hired by, um, Principal Scott, and she comes from East Bridgewater, where she was recently, uh, an assistant principal, and also has a background in, um, health and physical education, uh, was a longtime health and physical education teacher. She's also a fabulous addition, and has already hit the ground running with, uh, Principal Scott. We still, because of her resignation of a point-five social studies teacher, we're looking to fill that. We're still on that task, and then you, that's a new, new opening, and you can see there's a couple openings we haven't filled yet, if you go up to the middle school, we have a point-five science, point-five math teacher, um, and then a point-five ELA teacher, which was from a resignation of a staff member. The point-five, point-five was from a retirement, and as we mentioned before, moved, moved folks. Uh, Ms. Lantier taking a position in STEM in the middle school, and then Mr. Ford moving up to fill Al Galatas, Mr. Galatas' position at the high school. So we're sitting pretty well, we, uh, have teams and, teams in place to hire the middle school positions and the, uh, the point-five social studies teacher, and I'm hoping that at the next update, I'll be able to say we're, we're a full house. So that's our, that's where we are right now.
Yeah.
And could not be more. Yeah, it was, it was a lot of work by these teams too. I remember, everything is hired by committee, and, uh, it's, it's fabulous to, to feel that, you know, you have your first choice in every, every committee, so it's been really nice, uh, really nice hiring process. The next, I think, if I can move to the next item, which is, uh, the, with, with, as I think was referenced earlier, we do have some, uh, extra monies, uh, based on some of our savings throughout the year. Um, a significant amount which we are able to put into prepaid tuition. We do have some, uh, money that's been made available to us, and what I'm advocating for today is, uh, the appointment of two positions, or the approval of two positions that are on our wish list, and, which we've discussed in the past, but because we have new members here, I'll just sort of brief on what, what, what we're advocating for, is the hiring of a point-five nurse at the middle school, um, as was referenced in an earlier meeting, which you actually were a part of. We are below the recommendation of the Massachusetts, uh, Human Services and Department of Public Health for the amount of students we should have in our mid, well, what was our middle high school, under one nurse. It says that from two hundred and fifty to five hundred students should be a one-point-oh nurse, and then you should, every fifty students after that, you should move up a point-one. With eight hundred students, we're looking at the, um, need to hire a point-five nurse. As was pointed out by, um, a, a community member, uh, there are some needs that are, are coming up from the middle school with some students who are gonna require some, uh, some extra support in the middle school building proper, and this point-five would, uh, allow for that. So that, I don't know if you want to handle them both at once and talk about them, or you want to handle.
You can, you can, um, you can talk about both of them, but you'll probably look at them separately, action them separately.
And then, uh, so that, so is a compelling reason for that. We do have a, a separate nurses' office, that will be a proper nurses' office, if you, if you give the, uh, the go-ahead for it, uh, in the middle school, where we would have a, a person there for a portion of the day to make sure we could handle, uh, the, the needs of the students. And, um, even though enrollment is dipping slightly, we're still gonna be above that number going forward, so it's something that we need to really look at, whether we, whether we get approval now, or we look at down the road, it's certainly high up on our list. And the second position is also, uh, something that is, have, we've been advocating for. A study that happened, um, earlier this past year, um, regarding our need for, it was an independent, um, uh, person who came in and looked at our custodial staffing, and they determined that we need at least a one-point-oh custodian at the middle high school, which was the middle high school, and, middle and high school now, and that we could use additional support, uh, to the tune of a point-six at Deer Hill or Osgood. This would definitely help with that, uh, would allow some more flexibility. What we're advocating for is a one-point-oh custodian that would be looked at district-wide, and, uh, probably appointed up here at the middle and high school. So those are two of our really compelling needs that we feel are gonna be there, uh, for us going forward, no matter what the, uh, what is happening with in moment, it's needs that we, we need currently and we will going forward. So those are, those are the two positions that we're hoping to use some of the, that money that we saved on.
Does anyone have any questions?
Has budget and finance been taken?
Um, yes, we have.
Okay.
I, I would just like to add, um, thank you, uh, Dr. Sullivan, I also want to say that, you know, there is nice that a community member came in here and had made a suggestion. I also wanna say that, you know, that it is nice that a community member came in here and had made a suggestion and that we're listening and a lot of, I just want the community to know that good view, listening, taking for it.
Well, well, it's, as, as Dr. Sullivan indicated, it was on the deferred budget list from last year, so.
But it, it, it's nice to have a community member come in here and, and know that their, their voice has been heard.
I agree, Paul. It seems responsive to Sullivan's request.
Exactly.
I agree, but I understand what I was saying.
Yeah, and, and also too, as far as the custodian goes, I think that's a well needed. And I would say to the new committee members that they should try, probably get a copy of that report because that's a pretty good intensive report.
Yes.
That was given by the custodians. It just basically gives you the state of the buildings. And they recommended in that study that we do add a custodian.
Now, if you wish, I could share with the team.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So they have it up. So make sure you get the thorough report.
Yeah, it, it, it was really an awesome report and it measured it, the schools, it was, it kind of evolved into measuring the town as well. I mean, the town is in a similar situation with their custodial staff and services and compared to the state and what recommended, you know, averages were per square foot and all of that. So it was very comprehensive and is a great supporting document for us to have with the town when we talk about doing maintenance and upkeep of our, our buildings and grounds. So.
So we have the money budgeted or available for it?
Well, it's, ye- yes, but pursuant to the earlier conversation, it's not a, it's not an infinite sum. So, so this is what I, this is what I would like to do. Since both of these are new positions, I would like to entertain motions to approve the positions because they're new. I would like to give Dr. Sullivan the permission to post for the school nurse because I think that's gonna be
Yes.
one that you're gonna need to fill quickly. And I would like to, although we, we'll, we'll have a motion on the custodial, maybe hold off until we see what happens. Because you can hire a custodian pretty much at any time, correct?
Well, more easily than the nurse, I would say, for sure, based on the qualifications of the, the individual position. But, so you'd like me to hold off, if, based on the motion, hold off on posting that?
Hold, hold off on posting for the position of custodian until we have a sense of what our, our total needs are going to be.
Okay.
But because the nurse is critical to the middle school for the timing and the start, have to be someone in place enough to speak before the start of school.
So based on.
I, I would be okay posting for that.
So if the motion goes through, based on that, we would revisit the custodian at a, at a time at a future meeting?
Yes, yes. Yes, and hopefully sooner rather than later, depending upon where everything shakes out.
Understandable. Thank you.
Does, is that, all right, does everyone understand my thoughts on that? Everyone have any comments?
No, do it.
Okay, so if I have a motion to approve the creation of a point five nurse for Cohasset Middle School, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, one, one moment, please. Wait for the second to be requested. So Craig moved to, Paul second. Roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jim Madden.
Aye, Craig McCallum.
Okay, and Pope, Pope, you can post that.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's wonderful.
Yep, okay. And can I have a motion to approve the creation of a one point oh custodial position kind of midway for the middle high school?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Cleary.
Aye, Ellen Mar. Aye, Jim Madden.
Aye, Craig McCallum.
Can I update you on one additional item?
Yeah, sure.
So in, pursuant to our budget and finance committee meeting where we walked the building and looked at some of the needs of the building, Michael McMillan, myself and John Mills, who's the new middle school principal, walked the building with a local architect who has students actually in district, looking at some, some ideas for how we could brighten and reinvigorate the middle school knowing that it's a, you know, at a, at a, at a sort of a cheaper budget, I don't know, than something major. But we also looked at other things that down the road we could possibly advocate for. But during the walk, the, the, the company that the woman works for gave us a very reasonable estimate on some design elements for the, the middle school. And I just wanted to, to let you know of some of the, some of the ideas that they looked at was using, it's really a painting project, but using paint to create a more integrated relationship between the entry and the entry foyer, identifying a paint program for the wall, trimming mechanical on the halls, creating bold graphic images for end walls at some of our major stairways, identifying areas for wainscoting painting that would be more practically maintained by custodial staff. And also while they're at it, we had them look just at some design elements in the high school as well. But the main idea would be to put these, this painting project into action before the start of school so that it would just give a fresh coat of paint and a very meaningful, meaningful color scheme in the, in the middle school and having some identifiable murals that would be placed in very visible areas. And then rewording some of the existing wording that if you've got, go through the middle school, you see there are words like perseverance and some really very inspirational wordings on some of the beams that go across. Just keeping those, but redoing them in a way that kind of fits the, the theme of the school. I think it would send a wonderful message for incoming students, incoming staff, for the community who would be seeing it for the first time, that there's a new change and that we're really taking the care to, to make sure that students get everything that they, they deserve. So I just wanted to let you know that happened and it looks, we'll, we'll be approaching you if it's, if it's a very meaningful cause, but it looks to be very reasonable in terms of looking at the design. And we do have painting happening right now at Deer Hill. And so there's some things in work to try to get them to, to come over here and paint. So we're very hopeful that this is gonna happen before the, the beginning of school.
Dr. Sullivan, the, the murals you're talking about, would that be in middle and high school areas?
So these particular murals were, the, the architect recommended that, this was just for the middle school. So essentially, one of them would be as you enter in the, the middle school entrance, which will be more properly organized. But as you go into that entrance, there would be a giant C there with the Cohasset C that said middle school. And then as you walk down to the end of the hall and you, and as you know, the middle school differentiates between the upstairs and the downstairs. And there's a, a, there are two major walls there where we would have design elements with, with some murals that are, I don't think we've determined what they'll exactly look like. They're gonna, of course, and we'll show the committee them for, for your, for your thoughts on it too.
And, and the goal is to have those, the, the murals painted for the beginning of this school year?
For the beginning of the school year.
I see.
And we're hopeful that it can happen, so.
Along with some of that.
Okay.
That's the, that's the thought, that's, and again, it was a, it was a basically a walkthrough and an estimate, but it's a, the design element estimate's pretty good. We have to look what the painting estimate is. But from talk, and also I should say, we had a, a member of a maintenance crew, Nick worked, went, went through there as well and looked at it and was kind of sizing up.
Paint goes a long way.
The paint would be.
Yeah, let's, let's see, it's like you're saying, you change the colors, you change the, you're changing the school, you might as well change the colors to adapt to it.
That could make a really nice statement. And I will say the custodial crew is doing a fabulous job in the middle school right now preparing rooms. So there's been some extra special attention paid to the middle school. Not that anything else is being neglected, but it's been a nice, a nice push.
So we should follow up in facilities and finance then to some of the other maintenance issues in the middle school that are non-paint related.
Such as the.
Such as, yeah, the, the baseboard.
Do you call that, what do you call that, a baseboard?
I call it the baseboard. I mean, it's.
Yeah, baseboards, it's, it's cold, cold basing.
Yeah, there, there are sections in the middle school where it's ripped up in the corners and things like that. So, you know, I said to Patrick, my analogy is like my husband, he mows them long, but he doesn't do the weed whacking. So it, it looks, you know, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna.
We'll get an estimate on that.
So if we're gonna look at painting the walls and ha- having this, you know, cohesive messaging via the murals and some of the graphics on the walls, I don't think we want our baseboards looking less than, less than what the rest of the hall is looking like.
It's gonna send a great message as we, obviously the capital project and fixing the pavement outside of the entrance is gonna happen in August. And then as we, as we work on establishing a prominent middle school entrance, that's gonna send a great messages to the, the authentic middle school that we're creating.
How do you decide what the images are? You said they haven't been decided. I just wanted to have this process.
So the, ideally, we'd love the students to get involved.
We could do a contest, couldn't we, the Mariners or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we can do some things. And they're coming up with some proposals and, but yeah, we can get those out.
I would love to have the students involved in that.
Well, the, the other thing is there, there's other places where we could put murals. I mean, originally we had a mural club that I, I was told created, and the murals are excellent. But, you know, we may have to paint over some of them because of the fact that, you know, it needs a fresh coat of paint so badly that, that, that might be something we have to reestablish in terms of a club. And one of the things that I love that Mr. Mills and Dr. Salas said right away is that, yeah, we really want the students involved in what else we can put. You know, we have a lot of things up, but let's, let's do some, some other things.
Yes, I would agree.
But this would be a very professional sort of seamless look. So you'd have some, yeah, it, it's nice to have the student input when they're drawing and painting themselves. That's important too. But it's also nice to have some, some kind of professionally done.
I agree.
Murals that kind of give it a, a theme and a flow, so.
I agree.
It's sort of the goal here.
Progress.
Awesome.
That's it for me.
Okay. We don't have to approve the warrant. Next is school committee comments and communications. We see, Patrick received the same email this morning. Michael McMillan had applied, what, let me backtrack. In the spring when Senator O'Connor was here and met with Louise, Patrick, myself on safety and security, we had been denied from capital budgets funding for additional interior cameras for the middle high school. And Senator O'Connor said, well, there's a grant available. So Michael wrote the grant. We got news today. We were awarded the grant. So it's thirty seven thousand plus and, I'm sorry, thirty four thou- thirty four thousand, which is terrific. So we can now have the additional cameras that the leadership team indicated we're needing, which is awesome.
It's gonna help in so many ways. It's fabulous.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you, Senator O'Connor, for your emphasis.
Yeah. Any, any subcommittee reports? It's been quiet. I know, it's, it's kinda, it's kinda nice. It's been quiet on, on that front. All right, I just have a few, a few other things. Craig and Paul, if you, back to Jennifer, so read us on whether or not you want to attend MASC conference in November. She sent out a, a note.
Okay.
We've talked about it. I, I think if you go online, you can get a flavor of the, what some of the seminars and conferences look like. And she can get us pre-registered for that. So.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, yeah, it's good. It's in November. The first week in November. Our meeting next week is our workshop. I got that reconfirmed today. We're gonna, starting at five thirty. We're gonna be here in this room Wednesday, seventeenth at five thirty. Dorothy Presser, who's the field director in MASC, is going to take us through our protocols, our handbook for updates, social media use by committee members, and then communication strategies with the public. So I anticipate, she anticipates two hours, so we'll go five thirty to seven thirty with her, give or take. And then I'd like us to spend some time from seven thirty on, not late, on our goals because we need to set goals for ourselves. So it'll be more of a brainstorming idea on goal setting. And I would encourage everybody can go back and look at, well, you saw the presentation of last year's goals and where we were. So you get a, get a flavor of it. And in lieu of sending them out in the mail, because Jennifer's away next week, so these are the materials. I'm gonna just take one and pass one down. Our handbook, the protocols, the school improvement plans, and should be the strategic plan. So the school improvement plans and the strategic plan, please review because our goals should align with the school goals and the strategic plan goals. So I'd like to ask you guys just to do some homework and start thinking about goals. And again, it's a brainstorming session. It'd be the first of a couple that we do. We'll have sandwiches and water and stuff here at five thirty, so.
It's actually fun. I get it last chance.
Yes, yes.
It's actually in the.
It is fun.
A meeting.
For a meeting.
Yeah, for, for a meeting, yeah. No, and Dorothy is great. Now, have you guys taken chartering of course yet?
That's what we just did, right?
We did it together.
Oh, you did it together?
Teamwork.
Oh, where'd you go?
Abington, was it Abington?
Oh, did you just, like, what, when did you just do it? Like this week or?
No, no, this was like, this was like right when we, this was like, I don't know, this was like a month ago.
Oh.
Charged your course early.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. We sure did.
Yeah, I, it, it's, my, my memory, it, it's a lot to take in in a single amount of time, but I think you might find yourselves, like at some point, like, oh, oh, yeah, that's what they said in the class or, oh, that's, you know, now that makes sense or something, so. So you, you've done your duty, you're required to, and you've done it, so that's great. So that's, that's all I had. Any, anybody, anything else?
I just have a question. And I know it was a kind of a, a different year because we didn't, because we had a not full principal, but have we looked at this school improvement plan for the middle school and high school? And are we gonna get a copy of that and where are we with that?
So what, what we get asked is that it would defer to the fall to give the teams a chance to work with, those new teams, because it's two really separate schools opposed to one, to really work with their councils and for Mr. Mills to form a council. So you'd be, it's just a little different. Some districts do it in the fall, but I know we don't, but this one year. I don't expect that to be a trend, but we thought it would be most appropriate to have the new leaders be able to look at, you know, where they were with their, with their, with their, their teams. And of course, you get the action plan driving most of the middle school improvement plan as well.
So that makes sense.
Yeah.
For the school improvement plan, but what about the handbook? Because we're gonna be having to get that out when the students arrive. Is it different?
So we, we could, we could present earlier if you, if you would like that. I think the plan was to, to look, to look in the fall, but we could definitely do it earlier.
Well, don't, don't they, don't they have to sign off on that?
They do. Yep, they do, yeah.
So, I mean, the, the handbook and, and the S I P don't have to go together.
They don't?
No, no. So, so I, I, I think, you know, if the handbook for the middle school and the high school, I mean, it, it is ready earlier. I have no problem just going through those or before the school improvement plan.
Absolutely. Whatever the committee would like with that.
Yeah, yeah, they, they don't have to be tied together. So when, so when they're ready, I think just bring them forth. Let's, let's just do them.
All right, so there's no reason why there shouldn't be a handbook for each school by the start of the school year.
Well, yeah, 'cause I think parents expect that and it's sort of, it's sort of like at the beginning of the year, they're filling out all those forms and it kind of makes sense.
Plus, what happens if something happens, you know, that would be advocated by the handbook between the time that they start school and.
Yeah, and I don't think there were massive changes or very few at all in high school. There were some in the middle school, but that was very well thought out with the school council. So I think that's a very, that's a smart expectation that actually I hadn't, hadn't thought of. It's really good. So thank you. We'll get that in there.
Okay. Okay.
Makes sense.
Anyone else?
Just a motion.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn at eight thirty?
So moved.
Second, can you move this?
Can I have a second, please?
Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wow, this is like.
So.
You might be able to catch the rest of the cell phone, you know.
Um.